Oh, you want to? Okay. What's I'm going to do?
I'm serious.
Oh, Gideon.
Yeah, look.
That one, okay. Welcome.
I'm excited.
Hey.
I'm excited. I'm excited.
Um, so that's how this works. Great.
Thank you.
And my name is. Hey, beyond great people. My background is on a. Before. Um, council member Joe. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Father, we uh, we just thank you so much for everybody's heart here today to be your vessels, to spread your love throughout Lindsay and the communities around. Lord, we pray that your Holy Spirit will be in this meeting and will guide each person's thoughts and heart. We pray God that you would guide the entire meeting and the whole presence for all of us in this entire room. Lord, we pray for Lindsay that you would bless Lindsay, that you would make Lindsay successful and prosperous in every way possible. Lord, we pray that you would work in the hearts of the youth, work in the hearts of the adults, the teachers, administrators, all the businessmen and women. Lord, we pray God that this city would be a light on the hill that shines your light too. So God, we pray now that your Holy Presence would come upon everyone, guide this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I need to declare the religion. Salute. There.
I'm. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of San. One nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Moving on to roll call. Mayor, Mayor, yeah.
Um.
Here, Portion Boris. Yeah. Also Member Samson. Here. Also Member Story.
Here.
Also Member Me. Here. Um, we're gonna move on to five, but two will be agenda, or three will be agenda.
Uh, I'm wanting to.
You want something?
I'll second.
How, how um? We've been. Agree.
Hi. Uh, hey.
Good. Back to you. Um, we're gonna move on to talk about, we have several to read before and uh, several of those we're gonna read, and so I'm gonna start it off with the mental health awareness month. Um, so mental he- health awareness month. Whereas May is officially recognized across the United States as mental health awareness month. An observance that began in nineteen forty-nine to highlight the importance of mental health wellness, mental health wellness or mental, excuse me, mental wellness, and to reduce the stigma surrounding the mental wellness and whereas the mental health is essential to the overall health and well-being of every individual, and the city of Lindsay is committed to supporting the mental health initiatives in our community and whereas one in five adults in the United States experience mental illness on a day given year and many do not receive the care or support they need. And whereas increasing public understanding and promoting open dialogue to reduce stigma, encourage treatment and support recovery for individuals affected by mental illness. And whereas the color green is used nationally to symbolize mental health awareness representing renewal, strength and hope for individuals and families affected by mental health challenges. And now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of City of Lindsay does hereby recognize May twenty twenty-five as mental health awareness month and encourage all residents, schools, businesses and community organizations to participate in efforts to raise awareness, promote mental he- mental wellness and support those affected by mental health conditions. Also, where are you all on? Don't get anywhere. Who wants to? All right. Okay, go ahead. Um, we are also of doing a proclamation for Public Works Week. Oh, yeah, that's, that's you. Is that what you're public? I got you. Are you going? Yeah, are we gonna know? Yeah, public boards is next. Yeah. You do that.
Right. City of Lindsay proclamation, National Public Works Week, May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas public works services are critical to the health, safety, comfort and quality of life for residents of Lindsay. And whereas decent service area include water sewer, creative public buildings and other central facilities that are moved to Lindsay and operate if identified by public, public work professionals. And whereas the support of informed and engaged citizens is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as street maintenance, sanitation and capital improvement. And whereas the men and women of the City of Lindsay Safety Services Department are responsible for maintaining infrastructure that sustains the quality of life for our residents. And whereas this year's theme, People Purpose Presence, highlights great cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve and make changes every day. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Lindsay does hereby recognize May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five as National Public Works Week and call upon all residents to acknowledge and celebrate the essential contributions of our public work professionals.
All right, recognizing National Police Week, May twelfth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, in honor of law enforcement agency or community. Whereas law enforcement officers courageously serve and protect the lives, property and rights of all people, often placing themselves at great personal risk. And where- whereas the City of Lindsay is grateful for the professionalism, dedication and sacrifice shown by our law enforcement officers every day. And whereas National Police Week observed May twelfth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, honors the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in line of duty while serving our communities. And whereas it is fitting for the residents of Lindsay to join in expressing appreciation for the outstanding work and unwavering commitment of the Lindsay Public, uh, Lindsay Police Department and all of law enforcement personnel. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Lindsay does hereby recognize the week of May twelfth, late, to turn to the fact as law enforcement appreciation week and urges all citizens to honor the service of our officers and remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty.
Hello, everybody. So today, we're recognizing uh, childhood process speech awareness. Whereas childhood process uh, speech is a greater neurological speech disorder that affects a child's ability to clearly and correctly pronounce syllables and words. And whereas early intervention and focused therapy are key practices in improving outcomes for children with palsy. And whereas children with a palsy often require an intense group therapy, individualized support and speech language, pathology, sound and hearing abilities. And whereas increased awareness and understanding of C A S and need to improve resources, support and hope for affected children with palsy. And whereas the City of Lindsay supports efforts to bring greater awareness to challenging disorder and celebrates the determination and resiliency of children working together. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of, City Council of City of Lindsay does hereby recognize May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five as Childhood Palsy Speech Awareness Day and encourages the community to support children with a palsy and the professionals to help them find their voices. Uh, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize a lot of palsy award that we have here. It's already for, yeah, so yeah, say hi, Eddie. And I was hoping that we could uh, show her there, uh, because she's, she's, she's beating up a palsy. And and so get a great example of the inclusivity that we have here in our community and she's one of my favorites. Yeah. Thank you and yes, from the one that started. Thank you.
Much luck.
Waiter, go down there, you wanna do?
Are we gonna?
It's like they don't see it for.
Go up this way?
Bring them all over. Ready?
Excellent. Okay, let's go. Let's go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for those. We're gonna move on to the council report, and we can start off, whoever wants to go first. I'm gonna figure choose. Whoever wants to go?
So first, I want to thank everybody that's here. Thank you for coming. They appreciate and their presence. It's always nice to see people fill our room. Uh, and it's been a busy few weeks. Uh, it's been a busy, we had our, our last meeting. So yeah, uh, it's, it's, it's a great time in Lindsay. So I'm happy that I'm here with all, with all of you. Uh, a few weeks ago, I, Kyra and I headed to Sacramento to do some lobbying with the city. We had the ability to, to meet the Senator Ratao. We had to climb seven stories to get up there just in time. And so we, we earned that meeting. We both woke us wet, so it was, it was great to meet with her and personally, a lot of good. And we also got a chance to meet with the Assemblyman Lucino, uh, not quite as long as we'd like to, because she got busy, but we're hoping that we can find a way to work with her and, and have success here in Lindsay. And I also had the opportunity to, to meet with the Senator Denver as well. So yeah, she is a representative of the state district, but she is a Lindsay uh, alumni and she was a product of our community. And she gave the opportunity to represent the City of Lindsay on the Assembly floor. So I just wanna thank her for that as well, at some point, uh, to have allies all over. So it's, it's nice to have uh, Assemblyman Lucino uh, rooting for us. I was also, also, I were kind of a scholarship scholar, so. Dinner fundraising for scholarships. I was able, I was able to attend, it's there, it can attract me. We have a, a track stars here in Lindsay, so it was nice to see uh, the, the collaboration in the school district and county. So it was great. Uh, I've been able to attend a few Lindsay youth soccer uh, games at the high school. I attended the table fundraiser twice for lunch and dinner. I had the opportunity to have lunch uh, at, at our new restaurant in my age where straw high sushi used to be, so we have another uh, option. And I was luckily uh, blessed with a, a great opportunity to chat with Gideon from Living Water Fund. And so I thank him for that. Uh, yeah, it's been, it's been this, uh, uh, I want to take a moment to reiterate the proclamation and really thank uh, the public uh, safety department, uh, the, the officers and firefighters for the few weeks. And I, I, I really want to say thank you to all of them. Because we've had brush fires, we have spring fever for adults, which has uh, big consequences. And so it's, it's striking me, I'm good, uh, but I really do feel safe uh, with, with the men and women that are supporting us, who support us. So I really do appreciate that. I also had a chance to, to attend a sample of the resource board meeting, we see the board leader. Um, it was, it was nice to, to, to network with the people that we aligned with. So I also attended the campout and today I was fortunate enough to get some tacos before this meeting at the fundraiser for Lindsay High School varsity soccer team to try and get their championship wins. And then I also attended baseball scene. So yeah, it's, it's been great. I really do appreciate it, but I know it's tough times right now, experiencing constant turmoil, uh, but I really do appreciate the staff and I hope Kyra and the rest of the department is there here to disseminate that, that uh, we really are behind the staff, that they're committed to be here. Um, I know it's tough times, but tough times will last, tough people do, and I'll keep saying that, and so we are prosperous times. And we're not far away. Uh, we're, we're right on the cusp of experiencing a lot of prosperous, prosperous and uh, opportunities. So I really want to thank you, the rest of my colleagues, for continuing to support the City of Lindsay. We're gonna move forward and have success together.
Thank you, Joe.
Um, I also got a table.
Thank you so.
Congratulations. That's nice. Um, you know, I want to thank staff for going out in Champaign Street and to find home in these. I do see them going out there and working really hard and I don't even have to say hot. That was cool. So it was cool, so keep saying warm or thankful whatever day is. Um, I also found by the olive pool. And it's looking really nice. It looks so different. I just can't wait till it's finished. And I also wanna um, say, you know, there's been quite a few accidents, so I do wanna reach out to that family and hopefully prayers and Michael don't assist to that, to both of them. Um, so just keep safe, be sure uh, I can move on a Friday that it happens. Um, so just be safe, make sure you're not distracted, drive slow, there was a lot of kids. Um, so just, just make sure you're safe. And it's good to be out.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I'll make my way. You gonna talk about? Well, I, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just say whoever was there, like the, who sponsored it. All right, so um, I don't remember everything I did in the last two weeks. Um, it feels that we haven't been here in a bit, but I did attend the Tico Red Carpet Step Up Awards where um, Lincoln School were um, awarded the Phil Cox um, award for, um, basically they got like the best award and they were awarded twenty-five hundred dollars for the car seat slash Viprudio slash um, informational uh, event that we had in February. Um, and now the, the counselor is very, very enthusiastic about what we're doing next year, how we're making so much better. Um, so uh, what we're adding for next year is we hope to get a last ticket. Um, because I don't know if you guys know, but drowning is one of the top uh, reasons for child death. And so we're gonna, we're gonna make it bigger and better next year. So it was really cool. Um, I did attend the campout. Man, I was the only one that stayed the night. There's a lot of noise. Planes and cars and dogs. Uh, but I appreciate uh, California Health, uh, DC, what Sally is here. Um, they were, were the main grant and all, everybody actually stayed free. It was awesome. Um, Save the Children was a, a part of it, uh, Rotary, um, of course, Lindsay Foot Hill Rotary, Starbucks, uh, Lindsay uh, Public Safety, they um, provided the smores, guanas, maybe hot dogs. Um, Lindsay Unified School District, I don't know what they did, they did something. Uh, and of course Virginia, they were sponsors, um, Virginia's Friday Night Market. Um, but it was, it was a really good turnout. It was a lot of fun. It was really hot. Um, that was, it's like the weather goes up and down, up and down. Yeah, I know. Um, today, uh, I did it to Washington School with um, Chief and his crew. Um, they did a, like an honor um, for the kid. The kids did the oath of honor and it's great. They gave them a whole bunch of candy. The police officers are gonna be all sugar up. Uh, they need to stay awake at night for a lot of, actually they're doing it maybe. And I would love to invite everybody to come see my son, Jokiel Junior, this weekend and next weekend. Um, the little names are actually in the play, so I will be seeing that play six times. But you guys can join us. Please, it's gonna, it is the cutest thing ever. Uh, a lot of, um, a lot of talent in these little kids and they're doing really, really hard. So um, that's it. Thank you so much. What can I do? Oh, my goodness, is this, is this Givana?
Oh, I don't wanna take too much time, um, but I do wanna thank Sal. I, we've known each other for a while and you are such a dedicated person. I know that and I'm grateful for that and uh, I appreciate you.
So I mean, I'll try to make my short story, because I don't remember everything I actually did, but I did attend uh, the talk for scholars, um, which was pretty cool. Without my first one, later on, I've been living forever and I've never attended one. So it was, it was really neat. Um, I did also attended the track meet. I believe it was over, uh, Tulare County, we both attended Tulare County Track Meet. It was over six hundred, um, I would say runners, but track rooms.
Track meet.
Runners. Runners. Yeah, I didn't know how to handle that. Uh, that was cool, but it was raining, so it was a little, a little odd. Um, I did the T-Packs, T-CRKA, nothing to report from there. I did the coffee talk. Um, that was always nice. There wasn't that many that showed up that day, but um, I hope more so the next, the next one. I did the grand opening to the, is it elementary? Yeah, it was good. Um, they, they wanted me to, to critique their food. I was like, ah, I'm the wrong person to do that. Cause I'm very honest. Um. I also attended the Officer Memorial, when that was also my first one. Um, I attended a couple softball, baseball games. I attended the junior carnal baseball game. They won the second game. Super exciting. Um, and I think that's a good idea right now. So like when I asked him, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to share that. Uh, first, I want to thank the recreation department for keeping the pool um, warm for the skimmers. Uh, I just want to report that there's thirty-six new skimmers. And so that's the largest group we've had in the last few years that have been part of the program. And so I also look forward to taking that program, filling up the pool and building the customer base when it comes. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. And then we're gonna move on to public comment. So the public is invited to comment on any subject under the jurisdiction of the Lindsay City Council. Please note that the speakers at which you comment on a regular item or a public hearing on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to speak when public comment for that item is requested by May. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person with thirty minutes for total comment period unless otherwise indicated by the mayor. The public may also choose to submit a comment before the meeting via email. Other comments received via email will be distributed to the council prior to the start of the meeting and incorporated, incorporated into the official minutes. However, they will not be read aloud under the state law matters presented under public comment cannot be acted upon the council at this time. So this time we're gonna be taking public comment, but I also want um, uh, May to translate in Spanish, just in case we have any Spanish speakers. So, no, it's. Man, this is. Um, in this moment, we're gonna come out, uh, if you're gonna make us a, um. One, one, one commentary, uh, they're in three minutes to, uh, to decide all of your questions. No, we're gonna respond to what you're doing, but we're still talking about the class. Gracias. Thank you. Do you have anything to add?
Hey, Mary. Okay, my name is Justin Valenzos and I'm the Lindsay High School student representative. Today I have some exciting updates to share about our athletics and student clubs. First up, I want to give a huge shout out to our track and field teams who are the new Division Three ESL championships, champions, sorry, which makes it our fourth team, I believe, um, to win this title throughout the year. Both boys and girls teams put in incredible effort and teamwork to take home this title. Next, a big congratulations to our swim team, swim team league winners as they have been nominated in the pool and have shown their dedication. As for softball, they are currently having their senior night tonight at Lindsay High School and it's going to be a very special evening celebrating our senior athletes and all their work throughout. Looking ahead, the Division Three Track and Field Valley Championship is happening this week on Friday at the Regent High School and is a huge event, so we invite everyone to go ahead, um, join us, our, our track meets and make it a great show of our school spirit. It does begin at work again, again at Regent High School. Moving on to our, from, moving on to our club, sorry. The FPLA members recently attended their state leadership conference from April twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. During this conference, they had a Disney business store, which was an amazing opportunity to get insight into the business world and escape our. Plus, they had three conference winners and the chapter earned exemplary recognition in State of California, so that was exciting. The Abbott Class of twenty twenty-six also had amazing educational opportunities. Recently, they went to three colleges, which were CSC Long Beach, USC and UCI. It was great for the future graduates to get a sense of college life and start on for the next steps. Finally, AFB organized a flip drive yesterday, which was a huge success. We had a large member support and I know it's a new, sorry, councilwoman. Um, many students did step up to donate and again, we had a lot of communities turn out, so that was amazing. Thank you all, and for your attention and for supporting our athletes and students.
Thank you, Jessica. I seen that. Good luck. Good luck. Grab any more public comments?
Hi, I'm Virginia Moya and I'm the fundraiser, the fundraiser. And I just wanna thank everybody for coming in our community. We did a great job again. Um, we, he, he, for the theater, we profited really like dollars short from thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Wow.
And he's like, we gave it to him and, and he says, okay, how, well, how about the expenses? I said, no, that's with the expenses that you're gonna get. Wow. So um, I just wanna have everybody always, you know, participate, you know, come in and, and buy stuff because I have, you know, hopefully not May, but hopefully during June, but every month, and it'll always be uh, given back to one of the departments in the city, uh, city and also an nonprofit organization. So we're pretty excited, I'm pretty excited about doing that. And so I hope that uh, this, it's, it's like I tell people, it's just my idea, but you guys all blew it. So, so I'm just happy that everybody comes in and, and purchases crazy stuff. So thank you again for coming by and, and we'll see what the next one is. Okay? Thank you, Virginia. Yes, we appreciate you. Not it?
When you said he, you were carrying it all?
Mr. Playbo, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's for the theater and it wasn't, it was Mr. Playbo. And uh, he was pretty excited. So, thank you all. On Sunday, you were doing.
Hi, my name is Steve Lillard. Everybody's cheerful. Everybody had a good time the last couple of weeks. Appreciate the gentleman for prayer. You don't see that very often. And uh, allegiance to the flag I've done that since school. I graduated in seventy-one from Lindsay, so I'm a lot over in there by here. Um, I hate to bring gloom and doom to your chamber, but uh, three weeks ago, I lost my dog. And I was very close to the dog. I had three years. He went everywhere with me. And so he was tagged by another dog running loose. Lots of dog going loose in Lindsay. Back in sixties and seventies, we had uh, Gene Hartle was the officer in charge of the dog bank. And he packed that truck almost every day, but I noticed this truck out here, my dog lives, it hasn't been moved at all. So I'm wondering if Lindsay still has ordinances against dogs running loose. You do?
Oh.
Where do I, where can I hear?
We can't, we can't really respond on it right now, because it's. But we, we know.
I have a lot of questions. I'll make the comments. Um, anyway, the reason this dog's so dear to me is my grandson was stationed in Germany for three years and he brought this dog to me, four thousand dollars it cost him. And uh, anyway, the dog was a dear for me. I just, we've got a problem here with dogs. You see fifty of them more running loose every day. And I don't think dogs are running loose because you used to have a lot of workers here. Um, if your dog was running loose, you got fined or the dog was took to the pound. I don't even know if Lindsay still has a pound. I've been gone thirty-six years, so it's a long one. So I don't know. I've been back here now, month and a half, just moved back. I love Lindsay. It's been my roots all my life. And uh, I always missed it when I was gone, the citrus and the people and everything else that was going on here. But uh, I just wanted to make some comment. Maybe all of you get together someday and figure that out, that truck's moving or not. Um. Anyway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Pete, what's your address?
Seven oh nine North Garage. A big dog coming, three dogs actually coming in my yard. And uh, my dog's about that big. It's a pure terrier. They don't, you don't care of them here. They're raised in Germany. Uh, he weighed six pounds. The dog weighed sixty. Uh, I had to make him drop my dog out of his mouth, then he growled at me. So I'm not really worried about so much about other dogs coming down, but I mean, lots of children. But I mean, lots of children, lots of children. Someday one of them is going to get mauled. I just think we need to get on this problem. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comments?
Good evening, my name is Megan Fowler. Uh, I'm here to Lindsay about well and also where I'm here. Um, I plan to, my rates here, my children go to school, um, with the rent is decent, the house is decent. Um, if it's like it's country enough for us, they don't have to run right up to the one rise and my daughter grow up. Um, but I got a letter of mail a couple of weeks ago about the water issue and contaminants of chemicals being in the water. And so I talked to the people here, um, can they direct me to see tonight? Uh, my concern about the chemicals, even though it's not posing a threat now currently to our health, long-term usage of it is a, a threat to my children and to me. And even though I may not show cancer tomorrow, if I stay here as long as I want to and this problem doesn't go away, I may not be able to be here when my children graduate. I don't know what type of cancers it doesn't list them, um, but because there's a risk, I just was wondering if there's anything, um, as someone new to the city, if we can raise money, get government funds, grants, anything to possibly provide water filters to, um, the low-income families who don't have the ability to buy them. I looked into buying my own home filter system, but it ranges anywhere from sixteen hundred to thirty five hundred dollars for my home water and filter system. Um, I could put water, we plant in the summer. I have a pool in the backyard, I built one, but one that we fill up and, um, and I don't know, I just, every day I take a shower and I'm wondering, am I brushing my teeth? Am I going to get something from this water again? Um, yeah, so if there is anything that I can do, help raise money and do like some kind of banquet singing show, any type of talent that I may have. My hot dogs too, anything I'm willing to do, um, because I know there's a lot of families, this is in a very high end type of area. There's a lot of poverty in the area. There's a lot of low-income families and I believe that we all have those. I think we should all have the cancer, but with anyone else to be healthy and, and real healthy. So, Amy, what's your, what's your address? Of Old Three Run Eastwood Avenue?
We welcome you so much.
We welcome you in all. You have a project in the pipeline of, just solutions we're working on as we speak. City manager, uh, software.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
I just want to say my name is Sonia Sori, I am a resident. Um, I just want to say thank you. I'm, I'm addressing the council specifically because the public service that you're doing is not easy. There is a lot of tussling and, um, bustle out there about what's not working and what, you know, what we want changed and I understand that change takes time. Um, it also takes a lot of dedication from your end and I'm a, a working model of five. I understand how much a sacrifice that is. But I urge you to continue being dedicated and keep moving forward. So that's all we've been continuing to do.
Thank you. If there's nothing, there will be more comments.
My name is Megan Jessupson. Um, I have a question about, uh, two point five. First, I'm a little confused on the service. Um, I, um, been involved with this service for many years and I don't recall tax, tax orders in use like this. Um, also I've heard the report proves out some important information. To be honest, it makes me concerned about plans to make. Um, example, reportedly explain whether they're spending pauses or state of programs. Um, um, it matters because, um, what, how they contract this candle and whether it's eligible for reimbursement. Um, also just don't get worked very general. It seems to me like this may be an effort to spend, uh, down some grant money, hopefully headline. Um, and I will completely reasonable, but, um, there will be one to save that after. So if someone compares that with government, I believe the public service will open up the image. Especially when it comes to contracts. Also on ten points, it's a listing agreement or, um, the property at two four, for Rosa, I'm assuming that there was no sale agreement made at the last meeting. Um, thank you again for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to close the public comment. And we are going to move on to the city manager report.
Have mayor and council. Hope to touch on a few, uh, higher than trying to keep it brief. Uh, council member story, I mentioned, uh, the city's conference, so several weeks ago and it had my, uh, my, uh, be point in very successful conference, meeting with legislators, meeting with other, uh, cities with the other administrators, um, talking about issues like state budget and, and how that, how the outcome is, it's looking, which obviously is not overly favorable, but, um, uh, but just how, how the, the burn dynamics as far as what's on my upcoming fiscal year. Um, additionally, uh, I had meetings last week with, uh, C set. Um, and we went out from senior center, um, talked about, um, their operations, looked about some partnerships and what that might look like. Uh, possibly incorporating wellness center and some other opportunities. So it's really kind of at the beginning stages, uh, but, uh, it was a good dialogue as far as how we can continue to strengthen and, and to do, um, to do more as far as with that, the portion of our. This week we also, uh, in fact, earlier today met with, uh, University of California, their walk group extensions. We had, the, uh, regional advisor came out and brought a couple of staff members. Again, looking at partnerships, uh, how the University of California, um, have a presence here in the city of Lindsay and they, um, are very interested. They have, um, multiple programs that they run, uh, uh, throughout, um, the area they, they do, obviously they, they work directly with farmers and have farmer advisors and that part of that, uh, they, they help, uh, coordinate four H programs. So, um, for, uh, a lot of youth that aren't necessarily in high school and can't participate in health faith. Um, they have an opportunity to raise animals, to have farm projects, learn leadership skills, uh, public speaking. Um, that's all run out of their office. And, um, what we were kind of focusing on as well is, uh, their master garden book. Uh, which they, um, they utilize, uh, volunteers and they help train and teach people in communities. And they have, uh, multiple gardens that they help, uh, maintain and advise in, like, selling to Larry, but none outside of the cities, uh, in the county. And so, uh, what better opportunity than to have a partnership here in Lindsay? And so, uh, again, it's, um, it was a beginning talks, but we, we went around to several sites, uh, throughout the city this afternoon and looked at some options that they're going to vote for and look at what that may look like, but, recognizing that their budgets are thin, our budgets are thin, but, um, how can we maybe work on something, get some donations? You know, use a lot of volunteer work, those type of things. So, um, so it was overall a very fruitful meeting. Uh, also, uh, I just want to thank, uh, staff, uh, and city services. Uh, we were able this past week also to, to tour all of our lawn and, uh, wastewater facilities, um, and took a, a nice warm day to go out to tour planet. And, uh, it was great. You know, it wasn't that. The ducks were swimming. They were enjoying life, uh, it's wonderful. This is being kind of what, you know, what all it takes as far as what our process is, as far as from our, so this is what our treatment plan going from the canal, bringing it in, treating it, making sure that, um, we do have abilities, looking at different well sites. Put our own, um, operational well as well as well, whatever, what, what that looks like. Uh, partnership with Linnmore Innovation District, uh, partnership with Lindsay Travel Innovation District. Um, some of the, um, proposals that have been talked about, um, with, um, and partnerships that we, we work with the county and others, with, with, and financial or expunged girl. Just the various things. There's lots of different moving parts and for this, uh, uh, you know, I don't know, a good half day well spent is why I was looking at our operations and having a, a much better understanding of what it all takes to provide essential services to the city that, um, is probably not so glamorous. So, um, people just want to make sure when things flush that it's all taken care of and that when you open the tap, that that's going to be fine. And so, um, outside of mine, unless something's broken. And that's, and which is not necessarily a bad thing, but that's, but we're also just recognize that it takes a lot of work to make sure that those basic functions happen. So, um, maybe everyone for that. I do want to, since the olive bowl and capu park was mentioned earlier, um, in council comments, I do, just want to also thank staff. It has been, um, somewhat of a hurt delay and effort just to make sure that we are spending down our money, making sure we're not losing any, any funds, um, that we're getting all the work done. Um, we do have some deadlines, um, and we are pushing, pushing, pushing and we know what's going to be complete by the end of next month. So, um, yeah, they, you know, the lawn might not quite be all green and ready to go, but it'll be seeded, you know, there'll be some. So I mean, it might not be completely done as far as construction and working and all that fun stuff, you know, there could be a few minor things, but essentially it's going to be done uh, by the end of next month. So great progress, uh, from staff that's been working on it from the beginning for council that made the tough decisions early on and make the investment, um, for the city that's, um, the olive bowl has had a long, uh, historical presence. Uh, my grandfather played games at the olive bowl, um, fifties. Um, and, and earlier they used, you know, when Lindsay and I used to play football, uh, games there at the olive bowl. So, um, so there was, there's, I think it's, it's going to be a great tremendous asset. Can take advantage of. Um, and then, uh, there, there has been quite a bit of, uh, activities, uh, from our public safety side. So I, I did, um, let the chief know that I would be calling on him just to provide an update on, on one of the major, more major incidents happened in the recent past. And I know that, um, that we've provided updates to the council, but just for the sake of the public and, and if there's any question, want to give the chief out and provide a little more, uh, on this day.
On which one?
Well, whichever one you'd like.
Um, first of all, we had the, uh, there was a pursuit that happened, uh, last week. Uh, it was kind of a joint effort, uh, it was ours though, uh, for sure it's all, uh, our department. And try to communicate that, and personally, there's one, uh, for domestic violence. Uh, he was considered armed, um, and dangerous. Uh, we picked him up over on the southwest side of town. And he did not stop and pulled over a certain area over by the hall. Uh, where we tried to negotiate, kind of, well, yeah. He eventually took off from that area. Um, and he kind of went around town in a couple of fields and then landed back there again. Um, and then he eventually took off, uh, second time during all this heat, he rammed one of our units. Um, uh, kind of side swipe to the sheriff's. Um, didn't do it down. Miracle. And attempted to, uh, uh, ram another one of our units, uh, that was not, uh, successful. Um, he then ended up, uh, picking off, uh, north on, uh, Ashland. And he crashed into a vehicle because he could not stop at Hermosa. Um, and destroyed a vehicle there. Uh, lady that was driving the vehicle, she was a solo occupant and she was injured, not terribly, but she wasn't injured. Um, he was apprehended. Um, there was a couple of citizens that got involved. Uh, something safe in a custody, uh, but he was taken in because he entered in books and, uh, the gal was about to be. So we worked on, the gentleman was charged with spilling first. Um, So there's that one. Then a couple nights later, we've also had, uh, a fatal traffic accident in the exact same intersection involving the motorcycle and a motion. Uh, the rider of the motorcycle. Don't know exactly what that driver, did not see the motorcycle, there's background lights behind the motorcycle, hard to see. Uh, hard to see, uh, but, uh, he did not. So we have that. We had some. So that's, uh, all happened with, uh, a weekend. So. I'm sorry. Oh, the brush, yeah, the, the brush fire happened along the north side of town. Um, I don't know exactly how that started, uh, but it was, uh, contained critically. And, uh, but we're taking some.
No, I just, I just want, I know. Operating agencies, so I want to, I want to see if you could thank them for us. Uh, drinking fire. Yeah. So I just, maybe you're just someone that's funny. I appreciate the response. Apparently creepy, I was talking about. Spreading and suffering all the smoke and everything that's happened at that time.
You know, we, uh, we have, uh, really good relationships with, uh, the other fire agencies in our area. Um, we're also, um, kind of working on maybe trying to, um, work together with another agency to, um, build our fire response and be a little more deep or healthy, especially going into the fire seasons, uh, when we'll have, uh, people that'll be responding. Out of county, uh, we've also, I think, for, uh, volunteer. Actually, already have training and, uh, more to be added to the process. And get them on board as well. And that should help us tremendously in terms of, uh, having a fire, one fire response.
That's all my reports if they're earning.
One more question for the olive bowl. I remember one of the first meetings we had then was, they said there was going to be some lights that were on back or electrical equipment on steel. Uh, kind of wait on that till October or something like that.
Yeah. So there, there are some, there are some electrical equipment, uh, it's, I think it's time, um, to get through. But however, we've got our plan in place that we're going to be providing generators. Um, so it'll be operational and then once that equipment gets in later on, it'll all install. So that's why I said it'll be, it will be complete from the purposes of actual use, but technically it'll be, it'll be just that, that one item that'll still be completed later on. But we're, we're planning on still moving forward or having any.
I didn't sign everybody up so.
So just to kind of clarify, so the, what we were looking at is the, the watering of the lawns. Obviously you have to have electricity there. Um, so as the city manager said, we needed a seventy five kilowatt generator for that. Uh, we've made arrangements to, we're going to seed the, um, seed the fields. We're going to have the backup generator that will operate off pump. There's booster pump, uh, for the water. Um, the switch box, which is the electrical panel that basically does all the distribution, that is seven hundred and fifty kilowatts. So obviously, quite a bit more, something that we wouldn't power with generators. That is set now. Uh, the last estimate that we have is November. But basically, everything else will be in place, they'll then install a switch box and then we'd be able to power the lights. And I think the reason we uh after consulting with the city manager, we wanted to get the backup generator in place. So that the the field has time that basically set, um typically softball is like March. If um so we're we're on plan for what the actual completion was. Absent that uh power box, and that was ordered as soon as it was funded, it's just because of supply chain that. Um they got, you know, we were given basically about a year of what the delivery cost is gonna be.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Oh, one more for you. I that that's. One more time, don't do any have, we don't have. We explored it, but as people. Work on, work on. Thank you.
To be present.
Okay, we're gonna have lots of different set calendar. Routine items approved in one motion unless an item is pulled for discussion, there will be no separate reflection of these matters unless the request is made. And when T. Vance, the items will be removed, the consent calendar to be discussed and void of the final set of motion. Do I have approval for the uh consent calendar? I know that we have moved to one to ten point five.
So we have a motion uh in a second is can we get a vote on approving ten point one through ten point five?
Aye.
Aye.
Zero.
You want to. One.
Thank you, um. Ten, ten, five, so we have uh before council, we have a. Oh, excuse me, ten point six, thank you, thank you. Um ten point six, we have uh an item to go into the agreement with C twenty-one, partial sale. Uh where we lose the city-owned property at two eighty-four in Hermosa. Um this is just down the street, this property was originally uh given to the city by the name of Sierra, they had a foreclosure on this property. Um and so it's been in the city's possession for several years. Um this uh had been uh already noticed. Um at the same time that the Honolulu properties or parcels that um are currently on the market. Um that went through the notes for surplus property, so that is uh no longer. We didn't have to go through that step again, um. We have therefore gone through the steps of looking at what the best case is. City obviously doesn't necessarily have the funds to utilize the property itself at this point in time. And so believe that the best interest uh for the city, uh not only for the city itself, but the greater. Community of of Lindsay that the benefit would be put it back into use. Um we did uh utilize um what's proposed, Jared Innocence, one of the primary leads and contact of C twenty-one. He is the listing agent for uh the other property to utilize disagreement um is the the same format, um same um. Same type of agreement, just with a different property as with the other pieces. And so um uh he did, uh he had the explanation of listing it, uh the council approved it. Um for a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, uh based on his expertise, he has walked through the property, looked at it, there is. Um some minor damage that um that we knew about um because of a small fire and some. Uh flooding issues and water issues um because of the fire, that's when it was put out. Um but nothing, the the structure of the building itself is still very much intact, still has some good bones to it. And I think that there's some value and it's not necessarily tear down. Um so I recommend that we move forward with listing it and seeing he does anticipate that there. That it may be on the market for some time, um he's anticipating that the property of this site. Typically is a little bit easy, and so six to twelve months is typically what he's noticed. Uh however, um unbeknownst to a certain individual came into the office uh this afternoon and did inquire, but not. Re- realizing that it's on tonight's agenda, so um there's already been some interest about that. So uh hopefully uh council decides to move forward with this step.
Are there any restrictions?
There are uh not, but uh I can um defer to the city attorney who did do some research on this project. On this piece of property, whether or not we are limited as far as what uh I would sell.
Correct, yes, so. Okay, um the restrictions were only valid if there's. I can't remember the exactly the original agreement was, but it's been. So no restriction.
We have a motion. All right, motion approved. Second.
Motion to approve by. Motion to approve by council member force, second by Nate, all approved, all approved.
Aye.
Aye.
Move by five to zero.
We want to present presentation item eleven point one, Scotty Youth Online New Presentation with Unidos. For Salud submitted by Tyler Parker.
We have a council from Delano, thank you for uh joining us this week and we appreciate, you know, you coming to the. You're possibly the best county.
Ah, yeah, right, right.
Very nice, but.
My all, my all days you have to perform.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council, um South Lower Reeves, I am part of the Unidos Sports of the Project. Um can you move to the next slide?
Actually, there's a clicker, it'll be right in front of you and you can go.
Populating as, okay, well, hopefully it's it's okay. So we would like to thank you, uh President Formos, for allowing us to present uh today. Um on the uh exposure and access to tobacco amongst our young people and the community of Lindsay, I know. We've had some conversations with the email uh mayor and other council members um as well about this topic, and so. Uh we're here of course afterwards, just wanna answer any questions, but let's go ahead and move forward. So real quick, uh we want to uh communicate that we are part of the California Health Collaborative Organization. The California Health Collaborative is a nonprofit five oh one C three. And our goal uh is to is that we are committed to enhancing the quality of life. Um and help the people of California, uh in particular, of course, the underserved and underrepresented, it's still a map. We have uh many programs all throughout California uh that are focused on different things and different topics. Us in particular, we are the Unidos Sports of the Project. Within the California Health Collaborative, we are a tobacco prevention program. Uh tasked with reducing tobacco uh related health disparities and improving the the health and wellness of. Of the communities that we serve uh in Fresno and Flare County, in particular, the city of Ribley and the city of. So uh we want to, and I apologize if looks like some parts are cut out, uh and some words are all over the place, but it's okay, we'll we'll go from there. But we uh we just want to introduce our team, myself, project coordinator, we have with us as well, Abel Revolo. Is our community engagement coordinator, Jennifer Assey Vash is our director of program services, and Daisy Loaf is our director of uh programs. Our senior director. So uh when it, when it comes to our focuses in the community, we have four in particular. Uh one is to promote community solutions that support the community health as a whole, um grow community advocates at every level, so. In particular, here in the city of Lindsay, we have a coalition, we meet about uh twice um every month. That we work with young people from Lindsay High School and other uh schools here in the city. We teach them about leadership, education, and of course tobacco prevention. We actually do have a couple of youth that decided to join us today, I want, i- if it's appropriate, I would like to acknowledge them, you guys would like to stand or just wait? There is then that. Y'all would find rhythm to get involved, you know, I always say, you know, we are here as a source, uh in particular to our young people. Um to educate them on how government works, how policy works, how leadership works. Uh and 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 just happens to their leadership uh capacity, but of course also to educate them about tobacco prevention, which is very important. Limit the access of tobacco products for youth, uh and provide trainings and resources to the community. Uh our focus in particular is with Hispanic and Latino community and their use with tobacco, we see that. Um about uh three point two million adults currently use tobacco products in California. That's about one point one million of adults that make up thirty-four point four percent. Uh and more than four forty-three thousand Hispanics are diagnosed with a tobacco-related cancer each year. So uh those are some of the facts that we are aware of, uh that this product does harm in particular, the Hispanic and Latino community. We see that it also impacts our youth supports over uh overall nearly one in six Hispanics, so fourteen point nine. Uh Hispanic high school students are currently using tobacco products. Um we've we've noticed as well through statistics that when we ask youth, you know, hey, you know, when was the first time you. Utilized a tobacco product, we noticed that it was before the age of eighteen, and also it started with a flavored product. Um and so we've noticed the trend has gone down in regards to cigarettes, the traditional cigarettes and. But of course, we've seen the upright with base um and electronic cigarettes. And and we just wanna reiterate that communities alike the city of Lindsay has the ability to reduce tobacco-related health issues and youth tobacco access. And you've already been doing it, we would like to applaud you, the city of Lindsay has moved forward uh with uh changing the social norms and when we talk about tobacco. In twenty eighteen, the city of Lindsay passed a tobacco-free outdoor area ordinance prohibiting tobacco use and vaping. Uh in um public parks and other areas as we see listed there. Um so this is a map and there's a lot of parts that are cut out, but um. Where you see the the red dots, uh those are tobacco retailers, this is the city of Lindsay. It might be near packet, it might not, um but I did send it over to the city manager, um the presentation as well, so hopefully it's also accessible to you after. But within the map, you've noticed that there are tobacco retailers, which are the red dots, and they're near youth-sensitive areas, so they would be the yellow blocks. Um we've noticed that there um there there are tobacco retailers within five hundred feet or even less. Um near schools or areas where you can read. And that's important to note because uh we've noticed as well, the closer these areas, the tobacco retailers are. To the youth areas, the higher probability and chance of them going in there and and trying to purchase these products. Uh a tool that allows the local government to directly control the sale of tobacco uh in your community is what's called. Excuse me, a tobacco retail licensing program, uh a to also known as a T R L. Which promotes the health equity in the community, helps reduce the sales to underage youth, prevents youth tobacco use and encourages cessation. Meaning to stop tobacco um as a whole, and of course it changes the social norms as well. A comprehensive T R L has about four different dynamics, it focuses on the density. So the concentration and location of tobacco retailers per the area, so making sure that if we say, hey, you know what, here in the city of Lindsay. We only want, you know, five or six tobacco stores uh out of the entire uh city. Um it's also stating, you know, uh we don't want tobacco retailers near each other. You know, there's no point of a tobacco retailer being in each corner, things like that. Um it's also signifying, hey, you know what, we don't want uh a tobacco retailer to be at that, we want them to be over a thousand feet near a youth area. Um so there's different focuses that you can um execute the density uh component. When it comes to the zoning, of course, regulating the use of land, saying these certain areas, we're not going to allow tobacco dispensaries. Um the point of sale as well, regulating tobacco marketing, so making sure when a youth goes and purchases their hot dogs or their energy drinks or whatever. Right in the front, making sure there's no tobacco products displayed, easy access to youth, all of that type of stuff. And enforcement, a tobacco uh a T R L, um it has an annual fee or can have an annual free fee that creates funds to help the city with enforcement. So the these are some uh public opinion polls that we had that we um took about a year ago. Here in the city of Lindsay, as as you all know, you know, we're here to educate, but we also wanna make sure that, you know, we're not coming in here and educating you on something that. You know, the community has no idea about, we have gone out in the community and we've received uh their opinion. So about eighty-five percent of Lindsay residents would support a law that stops stores from selling tobacco near schools. Uh in other youth areas, about eighty-three percent would support a law that requires store owners to have a license to sell tobacco. And seventy-nine percent would support a law that limits the number of stores that can sell tobacco. And I believe the uh facts and stats were also uh or the public opinion poll results were in the packet as well, um if not, we can provide them. Um and about eighty-two percent of respondents agreed that the city council should take action. On the the limiting the sale of tobacco in the community. There was other statistics, I mean uh results as well, can't really see the numbers. Um but overall, we've seen that the community uh is concerned about tobacco sales when it comes to youth, uh and of course the community as a whole. Again, we want to uh focus that, you know, we're here to uh to uplift the voices of of the youth. Um we have a youth coalition that has been running for a couple of years so far, um we educate them on tobacco, but I always love to say, you know, we. We, that's not simply what we do with them, um you know, I always say that, you know, we educate youth that if they see a broken light at the corner of their streets. Who to go to talk, who to talk to, how to go about that, how government really works, because I think often times we have to listen to how government works, right? And and so it's important to make sure that we educate our youth about how government works, but also um how they can be the solution in their community. And that their stories matter, um and like I mentioned, we have to be here today. Uh to finish off, please use this as a resource, we're here to help, uh use this as a tool. Um any support you need, any leadership development when it comes to youth uh or the community as a whole. We have partnered with the community, um some of you are aware, we uh run, help run the Juana's, we help run the Lindsay Community Coalition. We meet once a month at Comterres Departments. Um and and we bring the community there to talk about what's happening in the community, and that's very important, I believe the chief also attended, Armando. Um and others as well, I have a council member present previously. And thankfully, this year as well, we've released two mini grant opportunities where we provided funds to the community. Um we awarded the grants to the Rotary Club, which uh helped run the and execute the campout. And then, of course, we also collaborated with the city of Lindsay with Armando in particular with the Recreation Department, and they're going to. Uh be coordinating and hosting a block party that's happening this Thursday, so we invite the council to attend and participate. Um and of course, they they also have the component of educating the community on this issue of tobacco. Um and so again, we're here as a resource, uh you know, we're here to answer any questions that you all may have, so thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions?
Uh our next meeting at Comterres Departments uh two, it's gonna be next month, it's the first month of every one day. Um if you. Y'all can um get your email at.
At seven in the morning, correct?
Seven in the morning, yes. Rising shine, drive all from Arizona to here, but it's important.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, I appreciate you, Lindsay.
Thank you so much.
We're gonna move on to eleven point two, Lindsay Annual Weed Abatement Center. Ryan.
Well, thank you, council, so as the council member Soria talked about earlier, uh with the fire that happened over by the repair project with weeds. Uh city manager wanted to have us give an update on kind of what our efforts are as it relates to weed abatement. So every year around the end of March, beginning of April, uh the fire department takes point on this and we break the city up into three different sectors. Uh they drive around the city and they identify properties that are out of compliance with our weed abatement ordinance. And they make a master list, um we try to time this kind of as the fire season goes into effect and really. With Fourth of July, obviously, we get a lot of unfortunate aerial fireworks. Um so we start sending out letters on um to these affected properties. This year for twenty twenty-five, we've identified eighty-five um properties, a list of which is attached to your council packet. Um and our intent is kind of multiple. Um again, A, it affects public health and safety, it reduces fire hazards, drive vegetation, prevents vermin dumping in light. And encourages property maintenance and neighborhood pride. Um these are just kind of some examples that um we had them. Um these are just kind of some examples that um we had them take. You've got like the top of Todd's Hill, um which is a a problem property. We've got a lot of the railroad tracks where we've got the um like heard from both sides that that is a continual problem. Um we've got, you know, the the O'Hare uh project area and also kind of at the curve at sixty five in Tulare. So just some pictures of of some of the areas more we're talking about. Um so this is kind of the weed abatement workflow is again, like I talked about, uh March to April, we start doing the survey. Uh we identify the property owners through the Tulare County Assessor's Office, we go out, we look at the addresses. See who identifies as the owner of the property, uh we have a letter template that we uh do for all eighty five properties, we mail those out. Um they are given fifteen days to correct the issue. And the letter says basically, if you don't take action, you're subject to fines. Um the city then could come on, do a cleanup, and we would assess the property owners' cost of the cleanup. Um after those notices get out, those went out, I believe all on April twenty ninth, is I think when the last one went out. Um I've already, you know, kind of done a little drive around town, we're already seeing um compliance with some of those. So we really try to gear this program more towards compliance, we don't want to go to people's properties and have to do cleanup and new building, things like that. Um you know, we try to treat this as kind of a reminder of people of, hey, it's getting that time of year, let's, you know, let's clean it up. Um so the next phase really is the the resurvey, um which is gonna kind of continue for the next couple of months. You know, this isn't something that you just do once and, you know, then it's good for the year. Uh we want to make sure that they keep up on this, because as it goes in the fire season, like I said, we don't want on Fourth of July, have something come up. Comes down and now we're, you know, having to do protection on a bunch of houses. So the resurvey and the abatement process is kind of an ongoing thing for the next couple of months. Um if we do not get any compliance from a certain property owner, that's when we really move to the correction, the silly uh city billing. So we would have um either a city crew or we would contract out with a third party, depending on kind of how many people we have available. The time and work, and then we would uh bill them, if they still fail to pay fail to pay it, that's when we would bring it forward and, you know, possibly put it on their taxes. Um as you said earlier, we do work kind of hand in hand with Tulare County, um also Farmersville, we have a strong relationship with the city of Farmersville. Uh they come down and help us quite a bit, we help them. Uh a lot of the properties, you know, we're we're not only hitting, you know, the outskirts, where they're the, you know, big kind of open areas. We also go, um you know, they drive the the big truck that's quite high and they hit all the alleyways. And so they look in backyards and things like that, they're looking for, they're looking for, you know, properties inside town, you know, we don't want to have. A fire hazard in there and then have it skip to their next door neighbor, so it's kind of a combination of both. It's just, you know, the the big visual ones are obviously the, you know, the big field they can drive by every day, coming into town or leaving town or whatnot. Um but we hope that we see quite a bit of movement, like I said, I I drove down today, just kind of checking a few things out. There's one huge one that they've already, you know, they're out their distance, so it's it's great to see that, so. Any questions?
So who owns, is there properties that have the? Plan, no, the, no railroad, the the property adjacent to the road that's not.
So a lot of the, usually it's it's between ten and fifteen feet on either side of the railroad, is um unfortunately the railroad company. They are a little more difficult to to gain compliance for, um you know, we we definitely send out letters, we we, you know. Just because they're the railroad, we don't exempt them from it, I mean, if we're gonna do it for one, we gotta do it for the other, um but it's, I would say it's. We do this every year and it's a bit of a challenge every year dealing with them, uh we've kind of got some shortcuts. You know, we hope that the the person that we talked to last year is still working there and, you know, we try to be proactive. Um you know, we have those numbers because again, year upon year, but our our goal really with everyone is compliance. So when we go through the assessor's office, typically it's just an address, you know, it doesn't say, hey, here's their cell phone. Um if we had that, you know, we would do that for the property owners as well, um but we. We definitely focus most of our efforts on gaining compliance rather than, you know. I don't want to go outside a bunch of people, you know, give them a ticket and say, here you go, okay, I'm beat, I just want them to obey the problem and. You know, the blind issues, the the same reasons that we listed earlier, the light, the the fire protection stuff, that's what we're really trying to get at.
Are you guys working on cleaning up the bombing basins?
So, yes, um in the past, we've we have contracted a lot of that out, um just because of manpower. So we used to work with the fire crews, um like the prisoners, they don't do that anymore. Uh so we're really looking at kind of what our what our budget is, uh we've got, you know, several of the the bombing basins that need to be done. Um and we're kind of exploring how we can do that best with with the available resources and.
Thank you, Ryan.
Is there a standard finer?
Uh I'd have to look up in the municipal code, this is obviously my first year on, so I've. I've been involved on the fireside for many, many years, now kind of the city, city services obviously helps, um it it really is kind of a. You know, a two department uh thing, um obviously, we would. Um go with what the the media code says for the fines and things like that, I have to look that up. Um but we would, I think in the past, we've actually steered more towards just getting the cost of doing the uh, you know, the cleanup. Um but per the ordinance, both of those are billable. To us.
Yes.
So depending on there's, we have two different railroad companies, so we've got the the railroad tracks that are off of. Uh say Mount Vernon, that are parallel around north and south, that's one of the companies, the other is on over just west of uh Harvard. And that's the other one, so you've got two lines, two different companies that deal with, um I I don't remember which one's which, but yeah, we. The the fire department is very aware of that, so we reach out to them.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna move on to action items, we're actually gonna uh put twelve point one on public hearing, so we're gonna move on to twelve point two. That was my plan, authorization to intimate professional service agreement with law and pattern restriction and recognition.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Oh, we're not on public hearing yet. We're on, we just started the action items right now. After he presents, so we moved, so let me let me repeat that, so we moved twelve point one to public hearing. Okay, so that'll be under that's all announced, it will take you to there, but right now we're focusing on twelve point two.
Okay.
Okay?
Mayor, council, um we have uh. And I am before you to enter into agreement with a uh large C P A firm that has some localized loss out of the O P. Um there has, uh as as everyone's been aware, some challenges. Um this with finances, um with audit compliance, the budgeting, um the need for training uh employees. And and getting people up to speed on the the latest and greatest policies and procedures, um and we've had some. Uh they're they're understaffed, the firm as well in finance department, and so for all those reasons, uh. I began uh looking into some options to bring on a firm that helps with municipal governments, uh helps with cities. Throughout um California, um this is uh an option that um that they can bring, that we can bring on board and. Help with the city on all those things and more, they have a uh proposal that's in the packet. Uh essentially, there's two major parts of it, one would be uh initially an assessment of. What's going on, looking at policies and procedures, practices, and providing a recommendation of work that that evaluates that. And and that evaluation looks at um meeting with staff, talking with them, having an understanding, reviewing and analyzing our policies and procedures. Um and then providing that to us as far as the best practice. In addition to that would be all the other um activities and the and the functions. As far as it relates to um helping us with day to day type of things, again, with audit compliance, with budgeting. With um any training that's necessary, um and that would be ongoing through the uh end of the calendar year, through the end of December is what the agreement is for. Uh I've uh spoken with them and um uh we would budget for this in the upcoming fiscal year. Um so uh even though um work could happen um very quite quickly. Um and they could be on board if council approves this agreement, um we would, it would not be a budget hit till next fiscal year. And we do have on the line, I believe.
They haven't joined yet, um oh, there she is.
We have Amy uh Aho, Ayol, I I we're we're having some audio.
Is your?
Are you on mute, Amy? Okay, then it's on our side. I we we see you there, but but Amy's here with Moss Adams, she helps um uh with a lot of the assessment, work for cities all over, so. Um. Once we figure out whether or not she can speak.
She's not muted, so.
It doesn't work, yeah, I, yeah, well, we can't hear you, that's the problem, so um. Uh I'm not sure. Yeah, maybe can you, wait, can you call in perhaps? Or log back in?
Yes, I can try that. Did that work?
Thank you, so I hope I didn't uh butcher it too much, but if you'd please share a little bit about the firm, about yourself, your background. The team, because that's one thing, there this would be a team uh effort, or it wouldn't just be one individual. Uh helping out the city uh in this interim period, um to hear more about you and about Moss Adams.
Yes, I have worked with Moss Adams for six years, I'm a director here, um I lead our finance transformation practice. Before joining Moss Adams, I was the controller for various companies, and so accounting and management um has really been my focus throughout my entire career. We are, uh Moss Adams is a very large firm on the West Coast. We um have helped multiple cities throughout California, Oregon, and Washington. With some of the um challenges that the city of Lindsay is currently facing, we'll be providing as needed support. To technical finance, budgeting, and accounting, and then, as you said, performing the operational and process assessment. To understand the the current processes, uh reporting environment, the organizational structure. Um with a goal of reducing organizational risk, providing additional capacity, increasing your efficiency. And supporting the effectiveness of the accounting department there. Um we are um uh team wise, there will be people on site. Um to help with this and there are people virtually as well, we are um out of Seattle. But travel often to various cities to to provide this support.
And um and I know that we've met with Colleen, one of your colleagues as well, who's um focused, um lots of CPAs in the firm. Um you guys have a upcoming merger that's happening later on this month with a larger firm, so at the completion of that, this month. Will be the sixth largest CPA firm in the nation, so uh quite a bit of resources and expertise in there, so. Um and I know one of the clients that you've had in California has been Stockton, which um. For those that may not be aware, Stockton's had quite a bit of financial issues over the past years, and so. Um having that level of expertise um with a a city that um that has had some challenges. Uh I think it's it's positive as far as what we're, not that we're at the same degree that Stockton was. Um we're definitely not, we're not, you know, not the third vacancy, so um. But uh but there is, but there are experts involved that um that that have gone through this um multiple times, that's just why.
Do we have any questions? I think a public comment for twelve point two.
Uh first, I wanted to acknowledge the recent resignation of our hiring director, appreciate her service, and I know the finance department has. That's secondly, we're on the main staff. Um however, in light of the resignation, I have concerns about the process for hiring Moss Adams. Um to support the city's financial operation. It's like, why wasn't there a long bidding process, so this is the only company we can go to, you know, and we haven't any other choices. Um so there's a lack of transparency. So with the long term contract, the significant costs, um we, as taxpayers, deserve to know how and why this firm was selected. Um so there's no competitive bidding process, um where there's smaller firms giving opportunities, they're bold. So I really understand, or the same, going back, um. Left part of the finance, we provide um necessary support. But by not having a bidding, a whole bidding process creates a appearance of lack of transparency and clearance. And so it's a discussion on whether we're getting the best value for a city. Um so I'd like council to consider whether a more competitive transaction process would be appropriate going forward. Um we don't have a choice, I'm with you, eh? Um. And I also hope that we can invest in rebuilding our internal team and not just rely on outside firms, the long term solution. So, um. I can understand now why this is trying to Moss Adams' work. But I have to say, this kind of turnover in such a critical department didn't happen overnight. So my next apartment was overwhelmed, and we supported our Mr. Public Attorney, our senior. Now instead, if it's a group issue, we're entering into a long term contract with a large accounting firm, Stephanie, at a significant cost. And the price that is quoted on the um staff report is sixty two thousand five hundred, not fifty two thousand five hundred. So my concern is not just about money, it's about legislative transparency and plan. Public to know whether we're moving towards rebuilding internal capacity or whether we're shifting towards permanent out. Hope this is a big report, investing on internal team, not just.
We have any more public comment, four point two? No, at this time, it's closed. Did you want to?
Um I I just, on the comments of by uh the public, I. I wholeheartedly agree from staff's standpoint, we do want to build up our team, we recognize we need individuals in internally that require full time work. Um this is um in hopes to get us through, in fact, it's um some of the staff shortages, I mean, was not anticipated. Um so this was already in the works to help build the staff um and to work with them, and so the timing of such just happened to be that uh. Uh we have additional um shortages, uh like this is coming up, but um the plan was to to go through it and timing of it with. Um audits, um responses, auditors are coming in at the end of the month, our internal, state auditors have some additional. Um uh reporting next month, budget in several weeks, so that's kind of the urgency of this. Otherwise, normally we would go through a typical bidding process. They do have local ops in Fresno, um and they do have a vast amount of experience, uh and we did negotiate on the on the price. Um working at it, so we do believe that staff believe that this is a fair, um and and um in our estimation, a short term. Proposal, so just sort of, you know, we're looking at um seven and a half months, so.
So not a whole year?
Not, yeah, not a long term agreement, but something that um can help us. Not, yeah, not a long term agreement, but something that um can help us in this period of time in this transition. Yes.
And they are the top four, did I keep that?
Six.
Six.
How often are they being informed?
That um is really dependent upon the heat, um but we can have them here um, you know, weekly.
Well, right now.
Right, absolutely. So um we haven't talked about that. Um we talked about that prior to um to our the resignation of our finance director, um but we haven't had that conversation since, so um if counsel moves forward that way. Talking about having more of a physical presence um here at the city of Lundy and working with their schedule. Getting the news necessary, make sure that it didn't be pulled.
Are we gonna um flag the finance director position and then have we have had a work together with this? I think it'd be like that.
I I.
Have you been working together?
I do believe so, um recognizing that um the uh the resignation was received less than twenty four hours ago, so. Um so yes, I'm fully anticipating that we'll begin a recruitment um sooner rather than later for finance director and make sure that he is old. Um so that they can get the benefit as well from this.
Ultimately, the goal is to make Lindsay shine, that's the ultimate goal, you know, that. Yeah, anyway.
Well, just using the metaphor that the city initiative, uh sometimes you need to bring in a shipbuilder or someone that can repair. Uh we can uh both, and unfortunately, we have, we've got finance department had uh some transgressions, not currently, but in the past, we have some bad audits, that's what the auditors have told us for a long time. And so we need to make sure we have professionals that are not just prudent, but are of the best skill set and it sounds like. That are, and if they're gonna be present, I really do appreciate that having a physical presence is is important. And uh and 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 especially in these time times, the transitions are, I hope, that um if this does uh get approved, that that is a priority. Until until we fill the large void that was left recently, um we need to make sure that uh not just the staff, but the residents understand that are being proactive, that we are ensuring the finances are still getting more and in my mind, one of my biggest goals is to continue to have. Right? If we have clear others, our opportunities to receive funds increase. We become more attractive to investment, and we can't do that if we don't have standard practice, standard financial practices. So hopefully, hopefully, we can give this approved, so we can build the capacity of our own staff, our qualified staff, and move forward in a positive direction.
Thank you. Any more? Concerns, question? Uh, have I had a motion to approve, twelve point two?
I have a motion to approve.
I see.
Do you have a vote for item? Twelve point two?
I.
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 Five to zero.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate you throwing the call on the government contract.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to the pub- public hearing thirteen point one. Consideration of a cannot adopt merger of twenty five thirteen amending the city of Lundy B schedule. And that was supposed to be, is that, it was supposed to be our finance.
Yeah, we're doing a team effort on this uh item. Uh I know uh Armando hasn't spoken in a while, and so. We miss you, I know that we want to to drag on you too much, but um we're. When our recreation director and and the city services director and myself, we will go over the B schedule, so um. Armando, you wanna take over and 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 talk about some of the things that we have? Um maybe if we say.
Yeah, so there are some items that we did update, uh increase on um some items on my end. We did increase the deposit uh going from one hundred to two hundred and fifty. He just felt anything I have is recoverable, costs more than a hundred dollars. Uh so we did increase the deposit for any facility or special events, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh we did add a alcohol permit, uh sixty dollars. Um and then also a alcohol deposit of five hundred dollars. Uh just because it's it's a huge liability alcohol things might get an add. Um the deposit is refundable, so if everything's okay, nothing's damaged, um did you receive that? Um deposit back. Um a couple of other items, we did add a restroom uh for special events at City Park. Uh seventy five dollars um per day for any uh paper product that would be used more than normal. Um we'll recover a little bit of cost, we'll full cost, but a little bit fair to nothing. Um what else?
Yeah, we'll we'll get to that part with uh Ryan. But I think that's pretty much on my end. That's the only piece I did increase and add. The so one thing when we looked at the fee schedule in general, we we asked all departments to evaluate, look at what their fees are, see whether or not it's in line with what the actual costs to provide services are. Um recognizing that again, budget for price, so there is ability, but also recognizing that we're not here to help residents. We're not here to um discharge absorbent fees or whatever, that there truly is a case. So um for the vast majority of the fee schedule, um there are there are no changes to it. And so um Chief Moore uh also evaluated it from his standpoint, and I believe Chief has any uh updates. Uh there were no fee updates as far as that, so it stands quo for all that. However, again, this is an annual process that we go through, and so evaluating. Uh Armando did have some, and then a vast majority of our fees are related to uh building and planning. So we'll hand it over to Ryan to help uh go through some of the highlights as far as what some of the major changes are.
So I think for for city services, the biggest update is more towards uh planning fees. So when the original last study was done, um again, we estimated our fees based on the cost of providing the service. Uh what we found is that in the fees, um it's going through more review process because of this, the person submitting. So our model has turned to more doing an initial deposit now um of what we feel the the cost is gonna be, and we clarified that um we're gonna basically we're gonna reevaluate what the cost of, say, like a lot line adjustment or a subdivision map based on what the actual work is performed. So they'll make the initial deposit. Um we will continue to evaluate uh those professional services as they go through the process. And then kind of as it gets to where those funds are exhausted, that we paid those out for, you know, our consultants, our planners, um our billing, um or our city engineer, we will then kind of do a screw up at the end. And so basically, we're gonna be charging what it costs us to to provide that service. So that's most of the the changes there with city services, kind of readjusting the whole model to make sure that we're, you know, somebody does do a lot line adjustment that we're not out several thousand dollars, you know, we paid for it. So then we'll be brought in. So that's that's really the change uh for for city services.
And it it should be a positive. We we found that in looking at some of the the issues that it's um oftentimes applicants uh may make edits or changes. And so even though the initial fee may have covered that that one time review, it's when there's additions that they want to make adjustments to that that we don't, we're not able to charge an additional fee. And so that's where it becomes top part of the, that's not all the all over time. Uh and so a deposit form um should cover most of the applicants, but for those exceptions that have changes then we're able to to bring in a dollar amount that actually comes along with the cost.
When was the?
So I believe it's sixty days after they're posted, which I think is in the, I believe in our report, it's uh July first. I believe, I bet it should be sixty days after after it's approved.
Uh, do you have a public comment for twelve point, no, thirteen point one?
To clarify that this is just a open in the public hearing official.
Yes, it is a public hearing, so. It opens up.
But open this, I'll open up the public hearing.
Yes.
I did read it.
If you could approach the podium so we can report it.
I was coming on the. On the common twelve.
Oh, when are we done? I'm gonna address that one right now.
Right now.
Yes, I missed one. That's the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Um. Do we have, do you have any questions there? Take a vote. You're voting?
Yeah, close them.
Oh, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And not going to hear three. And we approve thirteen point one? Yes, yes.
That's it.
Do you have a vote?
I.
On paper?
I. And I already moved on to twelve point one by my call, fifteen, you see now. Um the consideration and approval of resolution two five uh twelve approving uh to a new subdivision map on Palm Paris three. And then, uh welcome, not here.
I'm not here. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Counsel. Uh Christine Chavez, I am the uh taking here as place as she mentioned last night, just going out on leave. And so I'm excited to be here, but I also just wanted to introduce myself. Um I'm a local, so I can be there. Uh my parents actually um lived in Lindsay. I went to Lindsay for a number of years. So I'm excited to be here, participate in the community and help out. Um I personally have about two years' experience in the planning field, um in local government. So I'm excited to be here with my colleague Susan Long. Um she has extensive housing experience and grant experience, and so we're here to support you guys. And um today I'm going to be presenting. This is gonna be the uh tentative subdivision map number twenty five. Okay, um so history of Palm Paris. So this project is called Palm Paris um base three. And so this started out as a seven point two eight acre site on the corner of Westwood, Moeser, Westwood. It was developed by Self Help Enterprises. Phase one consists of fifty two, holds our family units. Phase two was an efficient all fifty two units. And this is going to be phase three that I'll be discussing today with um ten or more single family um housing units. So this is Palm Terrace space three that creates ten single family lots in the multifamily residential zone. On one point six three acres located west of east of Westwood Avenue, north of ABR Street. It's obviously an eighteen. Um and it's targeting low to very low income homeowners with homes ranging in price from twelve hundred to fourteen hundred. So the project will result in all site infrastructure improvements, so it'll be lighting, landscaping, um everything by city standards, uh connections to utilities, the water, rest water, straw. And all of the street front, which improves the score. So code compliance, this project has been reviewed in accordance with Title seventeen of the Lindsay Municipal Code of the Subdivision Act. And a partial map subdivision shall confirm standards are specified in chapter seventeen twenty eight. This is the technical um engineering tool for um the clients. And so um the lots created will conform to the outdoor requirements of the zoning ordinance. Utility easements and streets and the street right of it shall be offered for dedication um to the city and water supply, and sewage disposal shall be satisfactory to the city engineer. Public improvement shall be satisfactory to the city engineer as well, so this will be um fibered. Um there is a density bonus incentive under state law. Local agencies must grant density bonus requests for affordable housing projects as a nondiscretionary act subject to provisions of power. Um what that means is that applicants can request an incentive such as from the development standards um in order to promote the fiscal liability. So basically, if the if these concessions aren't requested and received, they the viability of the project is not feasible because they wouldn't make the profit or the they wouldn't break even, essentially, so. It would break even of what the property is, and so these are what they're requesting. Um staff has pursued um has a purpose pursuant to the requirements of state law. And they improved the yield of subdivision to ten lots under the following concessions. This is directly from the letter we got from Self Help. Um the minimum lot width for Self Help is uh sorry, the Self Help request, the minimum lot width for both the interior and corner lots be reduced to forty four feet to allow for necessary density. Um the setbacks, the Self Help requests that the side yard setbacks for both the interior and corner lots be reduced to three and a half feet to allow for home fans to fit on the proposed subdivision parcels. And garage depth, um Self Help requests a concession from the requirement of front building garages to be set to be set back a minimum of fifteen feet from the facade of the primary dwelling, that's from the front of the house. Um they're requesting a minimum setback of fifteen rather than the required twenty. And so they request a garage setback of five feet, so five feet plus the um required fifteen for the yard, or fourteen for the, fifteen for the yard. Um wouldn't equal twenty, so the garage would be totally not sizable. Um environmental review, staff has determined that the project is categorically exempt um as required by CEQA and pursuant to CEQA because the project's site is located within the jurisdiction boundaries of the city of Lindsay. Um it's surrounded by urban uses and has less than five acres, seven hundred one point six three. Uh the project is consistent with medium density general plan land use designation and all applicable general plan policies, um including the R M three zoning district regulations. The project site has no value, habitat, or danger, rare or correct species. Um an approval of the project is not related to significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. Uh and the site can be adequately served by served by all required utilities and public services, um being that this is phase three of the project. So staff recommends approval for resolution twenty five twelve, uh the notice of exemptions and subdivision map. And we're also requesting you have a public hearing, um solicited through the staff report uh to um receive public approval. There's public chances.
Um. Why on the position is the requirement should be met?
Because the the way that the, if the setbacks were larger, they would all be able to put eight houses in. Um and they wouldn't be able to fit the additional tier, and they wouldn't be able to recoup the cost that they spend to build the houses. And so Self Help, the self program that they're gonna be using is um, excuse me, can you correct me, my mom? But it's the um kind of home, first time home buy, home, first time home buyers for low income or very low income. And um they'll sell them the lot, and then they'll start building the houses together. It's like a a certain number of hours in the morning. Okay, um and so in order to be able to meet that financial responsibility, they have to have ten houses.
So one of the lots I think. There is the. One hundred and forty.
So the concession is pressing minimum lot width for both the interior and corner lots to reduce by forty four feet.
Yeah, reduce, so what is that?
She wants to know the square footage, square footage of any of the, yeah.
Sure, but yeah. I think, I believe I said between twelve hundred and.
That's the size. Yeah, the homes are gonna be twelve hundreds, fourteen hundreds, is that what you want, right?
No, a hundred.
The seller, oh, okay, I'm gonna use the penny most.
Sorry, the last five is three, between uh about fifty seven hundred square feet uh to seven thousand. There are two that are at forty eight thousand, or forty eight hundred. Thousand, that's right, I said a great first.
Fifty-seven hundred, twelve hundred square feet, or twelve thousand square feet, but one's a small, so it's forty-eight hundred to twelve thousand square feet.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the lot sizes range from four thousand eight hundred and sixty-two on the smallest end, there's two that are about that size. And on the largest end, there's seven thousand thirty-three. Um, the, so the majority of them are right around five thousand.
Whoa.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So they go in order at the top. First one is lot one. And then it's two, three, four, or five, then you go down, six, seven, nine, ten. So lot four, which is the fourth on the top, and then kind of raised a bit, that's forty-eight sixty-two. That was the smallest one. And the one right below it, lot seven, is four eighty-four. And the largest is gonna be lot six, which is just to the right of that, right off the pole sack. That would be seventy-six.
Any more questions, Mr.? So, so Self Help finds, how, how do we do it so that Lindsay families get these houses? Is that something that we have to go through with Self Help? So that actual Lindsay families build Lindsay, you know, build anyone?
So the, the program is a mutual self-help housing program, and it is specific to Lindsay residents typically. You know, it's, I mean, you either need to work or you need to live here, um, in order to be eligible for the program. They don't bring people from outside the vibe, and they're building their homes themselves. There's a group of ten families that will come together, work together to build each other's home. They all work on each other's home, no one moves in until they're all done. So you're not only building houses for families, but you're building a community as well, um, within that neighborhood. And they tend to fan these homes forever, and very rarely ever settle their own lots, which is very stable here.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I live in Self Help neighborhood, the home that I, my first home, I was delivered, but I have a good self-help home. So I'm gonna achieve that opportunity for someone to, uh, choose and achieve their American dream. Uh, single-family homes are, uh, few and far between built, built, simple, I know, but few and far between our city. So adding ten will increase our, our budget, and it'll increase, uh, the opportunities for everybody, so. Now, I mean, I would hope that we can see this.
Three four? Okay, three four.
Okay, is there any more questions? At this time, it's a public hearing, so they go public hearing. And I believe the need of this is going to end.
Yeah.
Well, um, I want to be clear, I understand your concerns of affordable housing. I know many families that are feeling that it's a problem. Um, however, our community already hosts a significant share amount of subsidy response. And more importantly, I just believe that it makes it harder to attract its businesses and develop in a true, like, this book. Uh, so, um, you can, it tends to know, primary for low-income housing, it's not always seen as a place where companies want to pay less. So, um, I just wanna make sure we're looking at the bigger picture. Um, and like, how much low-income housing do we already have compared to nearby cities? Um, and I just wanna be sure we're doing what we can to create the mixed income developments. Um, blend it affordable with, you know, upward homes, so that they give you more opportunity, I wanna, um. Uh, also, I guess this is not, yeah, I question that the most working session, but, so it just kind of feels like they're, wanna fit ten homes into a fair and tight space, but. Um, I just wanna, um, um, make sure that we're meeting reasonable standards. So I just wanna, uh, take a more balanced approach. Um, one that considers the impact of property values, uh, business interests, and human.
Are you more public hearing comments? At this time, it is.
Great idea.
Keep your, I, this time it's closed. Um, do you have a motion to approve all the points you want?
Motion.
All those aye?
Aye.
Count's five zero.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, at this time, we are going to process you, you're more than welcome to stay, or you're more than welcome to move. Your answer is very good.
Thank you.
We're back from closed session and we have nothing to report. By the beginning of the journey.
So, I would get that.
I didn't have any.
They did that. All we have is that. Bring your paper. Some people.
Have what?
We doesn't work. Yeah, we're.